Okay. Any other comments on the minutes of October 3? We have a motion to approve them as modified?
I will move to approve the minutes of 10:03.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Diane. Your second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Opposed? Abstained, one. So it passes five, nothing. There's one abstention. Okay. November 2nd minutes. Anybody have any comments or corrections on the November 2nd minutes? We have a motion to approve them.
I'll move their approval.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Diane. Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? An abstention? No. Six, nothing. It carries. Okay. Next order of business is our public hearings. Mr. Vice Chairman, can you read the call, please?
Application 2232 of the Simsbury Zoning Commission. Applicant George McGregor, agent for text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations, Hertford-Simsbury Form-Based Code and Simsbury Center Code for the purpose of prohibiting cannabis establishments in Simsbury Center Code and Hertford-Simsbury Code and permitting cannabis establishments in select zoning districts in the town zoning regulations.
Thank you. Tonight is a public hearing on application 2232, a proposed modification of the Simsbury zoning regulations concerning cannabis sale production in Simsbury. You've probably noticed that our adjacent states have all legalized recreational cannabis. Last year, the state of Connecticut passed, maybe it was this year, passed a statute making the production and sale of cannabis for recreational use legal in this state. The statute enables each town to regulate or to ban cannabis within the town. If a town chooses not to regulate cannabis or ban it, the state statute provides that cannabis sales are to be treated like other retail uses. After deliberation, the zoning commission asks staff to prepare language to regulate cannabis in Simsbury. That language is the subject of this public hearing. Our town planner, Mr. George McGregor, has a presentation to explain the proposed regulation in the background. We will then ask for comments from the zoning commissioners and then the public. Please address the proposed regulations and keep your comments under three minutes so that everyone will have a chance to be heard. Thank you, George.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the public. What I'm going to do, do very briefly, because tonight, as a public hearing, it's really intended to hear from the public, but I am going to at least try to frame the kind of how we got here. I apologize for the obstructed view. I'll do a little moving so you can see me. First thing I just want to note, as the public hearing is open, just a couple of housekeeping items on a kind of a for the record kind of thing. We've read the notice. We filed the text amendment with the town clerk in a timely manner. We have filed with the council of governments and adjoining towns in timely manner. We have received some written comments. Those comments have been provided to the zoning commission in advance of this meeting and were a part of the agenda item. We have received a planning commission referral. Anytime you do a text amendment in our community or in the state, it requires also a planning commission review, so we have received that referral and make that part of the record as well. Finally, we'd make the staff report dated November 21 part of the public record. Okay. So how did we get here? As the chairman began to say, Public Act 211, the legislation that state of Connecticut legislature adopted back in June 2021 included kind of a broad-based approach to both cannabis use and cannabis land use. And it established a local authority, essentially a local authority, to regulate land use action through zoning. It really means that municipalities can allow or prohibit cannabis establishments, particularly the two we'll really be talking about tonight. The legislation has a long list of definitions, but by and large, we're talking about retail cannabis and we're talking about the production or cultivation of cannabis. Simsbury has permitted medical retail and manufactured cannabis in our community since 2013, though we have never had a medicinal, a retail medicinal location we have had Cureleaf in the community. So again, state statute allows action on the top of cannabis by zoning regulation, by town ordinance, or by referendum, referendum by citizen. In this case, obviously, it's the zoning commission's purview to deal with the issue by zoning regulation. So the commission began its work, if you think about all the way back to the first moratorium, the commission adopted a moratorium in November of 2021, soon after the state legislature passed its language. And the reason for that was to establish a one-year moratorium to develop an approach or zoning framework to cannabis. This moratorium was recently extended to May 2023. What that really means is that no cannabis establishment can be approved or allowed in the Simsbury community until that date or during this period or until a text or draft amendment is adopted. So unless we have regulation allowing it. The commission considered their options at a June meeting, a July meeting, and a September meeting before scheduling the public hearing. All right. So what does the draft say? If you haven't had a chance to read what the draft says, this is what it says. It deals with both retail cannabis and it deals with cultivation, manufacturing, et cetera. So this is what it says, that retail cannabis establishments would be allowed in our B3 zoning district. Our B3 zoning district, there are a couple of locations in town. The B3 zoning district is our zoning, our commercial zoning district that permits the widest variety of commercial and service and retail types of uses. But in this case, the draft would allow the retail cannabis use in only one of those districts at the intersection of Route 202, 44, Albany Turnpike, and Bushy Hill Road. And the language says that one would be permitted upon special exception, and I'll explain that in a second, only within 1,500 feet of that intersection. The reason for that is the commission had discussed our most popular, our most trafficked retail areas would be most appropriate for this type of use. The draft limits total retail cannabis establishments in our community to one, a maximum of one in the B3 zoning district within 1,500 feet of that intersection. We would review it, the commission would review it by special exception approval. And what that means in our community, a special exception is a land use application that the zoning commission approves upon review and public hearing, so that each individual request would require its own public hearing. A map is always helpful, I think. So the light rose or light red is the B3 zoning district adjacent to 202, 44 and Bushy Hill Road. I always think it's helpful that that's what a rough 1,500-foot perimeter would be. So that is the area of Simsbury Commons, Hoffman Toyota, Best Buy Retail, those kinds of things in that area. For cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, production, the draft would permit them in our I-1 and our I-2 zoning districts. Those are our two industrial zoning districts in our community. And again, would permit them by that special exception review. Just kind of a word about where an application like this, a standard application, would go through the process. Obviously, we've got a public hearing tonight. The chairman, as soon as I stop talking, the chairman will ask for public comment and you'll give public comment. So the commission will have the option of continuing the public hearing this evening, meaning keeping the public hearing and comments open and continuing the public hearing at a future meeting, perhaps the December 5th next regular meeting. It'll be up to the commission to decide when to do that. They could close the public hearing, they could discuss it, and they could take action tonight on the current draft. They could close the meeting, they could, they could close the public hearing, they could schedule the application for action at a future meeting. The commission can direct language changes through this process based upon public comment that's been received. So the text amendment can be altered or revised and extended. And again, I just make this note particularly for the zoning commission, because this is a zoning commission application, it generated from the zoning commission, we're not subject to the standard land use timelines of the 35 to start the public hearing, 65 to complete it. There's no timeline for zoning commission initiated applications. And that's all I got.
Thank you, George. Okay. That's a good summary of where we are, how we got here. First order of business is to open it up to comments by the commissioners. Go ahead.
I have a comment there.
Okay.
I made a similar comment at a meeting.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
I made a similar comment a few weeks ago at one of our meetings, but for those who haven't followed this closely, you didn't miss a vote or a straw poll or anything taken by this commission where we made a determination that we would, we're going to take favorable action on this topic. It's been our strategy for the last couple of years that when we have an application, our action is framed around creating some sort of a favorable, an opportunity to make a favorable determination of that language. For anyone who's not in favor of it, you just vote no. So we're trying to create something that would support the application. That's what this text is about. It supports the application. There's been no time worrying about how to write something that says, we reject this, we're not going to take action on this, we're not going to promote the expansion, development, expansion of a marijuana industry in Simsbury. That's not here, but that's up to us to decide. So you haven't missed anything. We haven't decided that this is it. No. I can't speak for everybody else, but nobody corrected me after I said something similar a few weeks ago. So this doesn't reflect some sort of polling or some sort of universal feeling on the part of this commission. And before you make comments, I just want to make sure you know that. You didn't miss anything. We're working on a draft that would support the application and that may or may not be, get four favorable votes when it comes to a vote.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, especially based on the letter from Cureleaf and the note that we've permitted medical cannabis sales and production since 2013. I want to know where Cureleaf does not sell currently retail, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have retail.
Do, we don't permit that?
Correct.
Manufacturing, but not retail.
So at this point, we're not differentiating between medical retail and recreational.
The letter specified producer. We took the word producer out.
Yes.
So Staff, I would just recommend, you have a letter from Hassett and George regarding Cureleaf's position. I do think that additional language should be something you ought to consider, and I think you'll hear from Mr. George today on that behalf. So that could be language that you could add before we get to the end of the process.
Okay.
But it does say adult retail in their letter.
Pardon?
It does say for medical or adult retail use production. So it's just production. Okay.
It's where you put the influence in the sentence.
Right.
Where you put the emphasis in the sentence, I think, changes the meaning perhaps.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, if I have comments, should I wait for the public hearing portion?
We are in the public hearing portion.
The public's public hearing, the non-commissioned portion, since I'm not seated.
You may speak.
I may speak. We love to regret that. So I was trying to get my head around this as well. So there's a 167-page OLR report that I breezed through today, along with the Public Act itself, because there are just a lot of misconceptions and misunderstandings that I've heard of. And a couple of things that stood out to me from the report and from the bill itself. One is that the DCP, which is the Department of Consumer Protection, is required to make written recommendations by January 1 of 2023 to various committees of the legislature regarding its recommendation for regulations concerning onsite consumption or onsite usage events being permitted in retail.
Melissa, can I ask you to limit your comments to the text amendment that we have in front of us?
I think that people's perceptions of the text amendment may be impacted by understanding other aspects of the bill that will go into effect or won't go into effect. Is that okay?
Continue.
Thanks. So that's one thing that's coming up on January 1, 2023. So I think we'll have additional information about whether that would happen by then or not. There are a lot of concerns about whether it's going to cost a lot of money with regard to additional public safety services. The bill provides for up to $50,000 in public safety costs within the first 30 days of a cannabis established opening to compensate for those, you know, startup public safety costs. The Board of Selectmen has given additional municipal authority when it comes to regulating, especially the smoking of cannabis in various additional areas above and beyond their regular ability to do that. There's always the ability, as George said previously, to hold a referendum for it. One of the often spoken benefits of having a retail establishment in Simsbury is the taxation and the additional 3% tax. And there's been questions about whether we can or cannot use that money and for what purposes we can. The 3% money, the 3% tax that the municipality will get has some limitations and we should be cognizant of where and how that money can be spent according to those provisions as we're making a determination about the locations. Those are my comments.
Okay. Thank you. George, we had your staff report available to people, is that right?
I don't know that we made a particular announcement about it.
Okay.
But it is in the room.
The staff report from our staff is available somewhere in the back, and it does list the uses that you can make of the money that you will get. Okay. Any other?
I do have one thing. I don't want to take too much time. I know everybody else is eager to speak. My only thing that, and I agree with a lot of what Melissa said, but my only other thing that I just would love some clarification on before we eventually vote on this is if we vote to approve, you know, this text amendment, does that mean it's a done deal? Or what is the process through the boards, you know? Does the Board of Selectmen then have the ultimate say as to whether or not this is something, and we're just building the framework that they can approve?
The zoning regulation, when we vote on it, we set a date that it becomes effective. And that then becomes a date that someone could apply for, if we approved a retail establishment in that area.
So the Board of Selectmen?
The Selectmen have the opportunity to prohibit cannabis in town, in which case the approved site would have the ability to sell it if they changed their mind, but would not be able to sell it until the Selectmen rescinded it, if they were to. So it's...
So we make our text amendment, at which point any person who is interested could step forward and apply.
Right.
But then the Board of Selectmen at some time to be determined in the future could say no cannabis, period?
Yeah. I think once a special exception were granted, then it would become grandfathered. Is that right, George?
Yeah. The bodies act independently of each other. So yes, the Board of Selectmen at some point in time could approve, it would be by ordinance, some prohibition. Equally, some group of citizens could file a petition based upon the standards set forth in the statute, I think it's 10% of total, not total numbers, but total registered voters. And so that could happen. So, you know, our reading would be that if a cannabis establishment was permitted before that happened, then it would be illegally non-conforming use and could continue.
Okay. Can I clarify?
Yes. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Yes. I'm just not clear. It was my impression that the Board of Selectmen would have another, you know, independent shot at this question. We could go forward and say, we're all really hot to have marijuana industry growing in Simsbury, let's go. And then the Board of Selectmen in a few weeks could make a different decision and say, no, we don't want it by an ordinance. And conversely, if we said, no, we don't want it, the Board of, the zoning commission, and then a few weeks later, the Board of Selectmen could say, we do want it in Simsbury, and they could pass an ordinance. So I hear you saying that they can only act if we are making a determination not to support this, and then they could act to go forward with an ordinance that would introduce marijuana, cannabis, and all the issues that are in the current.
No, Mr. Lee, that's not what I'm saying. The Board of Selectmen can act in any way that they so fit.
Okay. I got that. Thank you. They can act, and whatever they decide.
Bruce, sorry. We're not hearing what you're saying.
Well, what I'm understanding is that the Board of Selectmen then can make an entirely independent decision up or down on cannabis in Simsbury regardless of what we do, but it wouldn't make sense for them to take the same step we've just taken. If we support it and adopt a regulation, and the Board of Selectmen is supportive of that, there's no need for them to do anything. Am I right?
The Board of Selectmen can act independently, either in an affirmative or in a negative manner on the issue, regardless of what they do.
Regardless of the action taken by the zoning commission.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's not what I heard said earlier.
This is a public comment on the application, and we're not really entertaining questions.
Well, I'm trying to clarify what was said here by one of my colleagues, the old commissioner, as well as by George. I think it's clear now. If anybody doesn't feel it's clear, come on up and you can ask.
Okay. All right. Any other comments by the commission? Okay. Does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? If you do, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
It's much easier to have a paper to go there and do it. It's up to you, but...
We have the camera set up so that you can stand there if you want to be on the camera.
All right. Thank you. Joan Coe, 26 Whitcombe Drive. "I am against increasing the distribution and sale of cannabis marijuana in Simsbury. David Murphy from the Hudson Institute wrote, 'The Colorado experiment legalized marijuana's impact in Colorado,' end quote. Not only did the promised benefits, both financial and on behalf of public safety, not come to pass, but as multiple areas of daily life, the metrics have worsened. Moreover, the data from Colorado have been accompanied by several years of greater medical science, awareness of the health risks from marijuana exposure, easier access, greater prevalence, higher psychoactive potency from increased THC, a continued criminal element, and more intensive daily use has all occurred since the experiment began,' end quote. Venture capital is promoting the increase of sales in cannabis marijuana." Hartford Current, quote, "Connecticut's venture capital fund is among the first institutional investors to jump into the growing cannabis business, committing $1.25 million to manufacture of edibles intended to enhance energy, focus, and mental health," end quote. Cureleaf LLC, located in Simsbury at 34 Hop Meadow Street, headquartered in Wakefield, Massachusetts. Cureleaf has a presence in 21 states and owns and operates 144 dispensaries and 29 cultivation sites with a focus on highly populated states, including Arizona, Florida, Illinois, Massachusetts, New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. Millions of dollars in lobbying efforts by venture capitalists will corrupt the system. According to the CDC, using marijuana can lead to numerous adverse effects. Marijuana can significantly affect individuals' cognitive abilities, leading to poor memory and decision-making, loss of coordination, and difficulty learning. Impaired cognition can lead to participation in risky behavior and poor life choices that can have serious consequences. Marijuana leads to negative effects on major organs such as heart and lungs as it causes rapid heart rates, increased blood pressure, and lung tissue damage. The substance increases the risk for the development of heart disease and strokes. Cannabis hypermyosis syndrome is a condition of severe nausea vomiting following marijuana, which can cause abdominal pain, dehydration, esophagus inflammation, or perforation, poor nutrition, and tooth breakdown. Using recreational marijuana can also lead to psychological effects. The CDC describes the correlation between marijuana use and mental illness, including depression and anxiety. There can be both short-term effects such as altered perception of reality and paranoid thoughts, or long-term complications. The most alarming finding of the side effects is that suicidal thoughts and attempts have been related to marijuana use. Marijuana is a mind-altering drug, causing serious mental health issues that will cause pain and suffering for years to come. Andrew Glassman, chair of Pullman and Comley's Cannabis, CBD, and Hemp Practice, spoke to Fox 61 Morning News about new business opportunities and work-first policies on the first day of the legalization of recreational marijuana in Connecticut. Andrew Glassman is the husband of Mary Glassman. Lawyers and venture capitalists should not set the policies for Simsbury. What is the position of the Board of Education, Police Department, and Social Services on these issues? The increased distribution and sale and use of cannabis marijuana in Simsbury should be denied by the zoning commission and all of my comments we put on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thomas Turner, 11 Barnard Drive, Simsbury. "Good evening. I urge the zoning board to maintain a moratorium on the question of allowing marijuana sales in Simsbury until the matter can be addressed in a referendum by Simsbury voters next year. This question is too important to be decided without inclusion of a referendum on this matter. And I am certain that zoning board members recognize that support for a very important decision that has public backing will be much more readily accepted than without such public support. In early September this year, my wife and I sought to determine the feasibility of gathering enough petition signatures outside Fitzgeralds and the Big Y to support the referendum route. Following rules provided by the town clerk and with a deadline of September 9 just eight days away, we obtained 128 valid signatures in seven hours, or about 18 an hour, supporting the referendum route. That rate would have allowed two persons to gather the required 1,888 valid signatures in about 20 days. But there simply was not enough time between July and September 9 to organize such a petition drive and carry the effort out."
Thank you very much.
Our takeaway from this trial run was that... Our takeaway from this trial run was that at least three-quarters of the persons we approached agreed to sign our petition to have this matter appear on the ballot, that these signatures were being obtained at a rapid pace, and that this indicated that Simsbury residents wanted to see this process done right by referendum, allowing citizens of the town to weigh in on an important decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Okay, someone else wish to speak to this issue?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Gray. I reside at 120 Old Canal Way in Wheaton. And I'm here tonight to offer you some additional things to think about while considering allowing the sale of recreational cannabis within our town that you may not be aware of. Many of my statements come directly from this book, which is written by a former presidential drug policy advisor and now co-founder with former U.S. Representative Patrick Kennedy of an organization called Smart Approaches to Marijuana. His name is Kevin Sabat, and the name of the book is Smokescreen: What the Marijuana Industry Doesn't Want You to Know. Today, there are more than 10 times as many daily users of marijuana than there were when Bill Clinton was president. There's also been a major jump in marijuana hospitalizations and drug-driving fatalities, as well as demonstrated links between THC and psychosis, schizophrenia, suicide, and depression. Today's marijuana isn't anything like it used to be. It can be up to 99% potent, and no one knows the effect this can have on the brain. The British Medical Journal, The Lancet, recently published research indicating regular users of today's highly potent marijuana are five times more likely than non-users to develop psychosis. Manufacturers of legalized recreational marijuana are packaging and spinning weed into countless other forms. Gummy bears and lollipops are now being sold with unprecedented levels of THC, all the while luring new and younger users. They're enticing them with cookies, sodas, wax, butter, dabs, and shatter. If you've never heard of those last three, don't worry, you're not alone. But trust me, the youth of Simsbury know what they are. Research shows marijuana use among youth can lead to a permanent eight-point drop in IQ, as well as a significant increase in the risk of schizophrenia and suicidal thoughts. Since pot was legalized in Colorado, the state has continued to see increases in youth suicide coinciding with an increase in marijuana, which far outweighs alcohol showing up in their toxicology reports. You may be thinking, but we're not talking about making cannabis available to youth. Well, we all know how well that train of thought has worked with cigarettes and alcohol. If marijuana is made more readily available, it will get into the hands of our young residents. Just two weeks ago, a 16-year-old Simsbury resident was taken to the hospital by ambulance after smoking marijuana with a friend. Would it surprise you to learn that no one in the states where pot is now legal has a clear idea of what precisely people are smoking, ingesting, vaping, and otherwise consuming? That today's regulated marijuana often contains mold, pesticides, bacteria, and other additives? That some of the state agencies charged with oversight are woefully understaffed, like so many other employers today? And that so-called state inspectors often miss key safety issues? In some areas, known drug dealers have been granted licenses and are now operating in the legal market while continuing their illegal work. There's a naive public assumption that with legalization and the introduction of government licensing and oversight, illegal activity has curtailed, and recreational marijuana is safer. A century ago, dangerous substances were marketed to look and sound completely benign. Doctors were featured in advertisements, including one which peddled asthma cigarettes, without blinking an eye. We can laugh at these advertisements now, but we know Americans were duped by the tobacco industry for decades. As The Economist recently suggested, while lab animals are an expensive way of understanding the risks of cannabis use, Americans come free. I've heard many people say, well, alcohol is legal, why shouldn't marijuana be legalized? Humans have been consuming alcohol for more than 5,000 years. Most people who drink today are part of that cultural continuum, making efforts to prohibit alcohol futile. By contrast, we don't have the same centuries-long ingrained history with marijuana. Most people do not use and have never used drugs, and the laws reflect that. If properly applied, laws can deter and stop mass normalization of pot before it ever goes the way of alcohol. Did you know that during the brief period of alcohol prohibition from 1920 to 1933, diseases such as cirrhosis of the liver dramatically declined in prevalence, and that tens of thousands of lives have been saved since 1984, when Congress upped the national minimum drinking age to 21? These are not reasons to prohibit alcohol because it is so ubiquitous, but these examples prove that access and availability are key factors of use with any substance prone to misuse. I don't care if an adult smokes a joint and falls asleep on their couch, and this isn't about sick people seeking some relief from their pain. But why, as a town, should we rush headlong into allowing highly potent THC products to be sold without truly understanding the consequences? Some may say, well, if it's legal, Simsbury residents are just going to go into the next town and buy it anyway. That's fine, let them. There are plenty of other legal businesses in Connecticut, like adult bookstores, that are not within our town limits.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Mr. George?
Yes. Good evening. Louis George from Hassan George. I'm here on behalf of Curaleaf, located at 34 Hop Meadow Street in Simsbury. First, Curaleaf has been in this town. I'm not sure if everyone realizes it. It has a very low profile, but it's been in this town for eight years and has been manufacturing. I want to say right up front that Curaleaf does not have any intention to sell retail cannabis, and that's not why I'm here. I'm here specifically to make sure that the present operations are not affected and there aren't any other negative unintended consequences that affect a good corporate citizen. They employ 65 people. They pay over $300,000 in personal property tax to this town. So, our job is to just make sure, as a group, that what the text amendment states doesn't affect that operation if, in fact, it is the commission's belief that that organization should continue to exist uninhibited. And with that, having gone through the text amendment, I had two aspects that I thought would be helpful in terms of clarifying that. One, in the definition, I think it was in oversight, the word producer was taken out in the regulation. It's technically in the definition, but was not in the regulation. I think on page 5, I'm sorry, page 32, section 5.5, producer should be added in there, which they are, a producer. That's number one. Number two, it's an ongoing business. They are allowed, they are in the I-2 zone on Hop Meadow Street. So, under this text amendment, they would be able to continue to do what they do. What we want to make sure is that it's not considered a non-conforming use. We want to make sure that in that I-2 zone, that this existing establishment is considered an as-of-right use for this location, in this establishment, in this zone. We don't want it to be considered in any way non-conforming, where they would have to come back every time they do something to expand and have hearings on that. So, with that, I provided the language that stated that cannabis establishments, as defined, that are in existence at the time of the adoption of the amended cannabis regulations shall be considered an as-of-right use for this particular location and shall not be considered a non-conforming use. And again, the Curaleaf has been in this town. It's considered one of their flagship operation in Connecticut. It's a manufacturer. It belongs in an industrial area, which it is. And I had one question on that. Years ago, there was a PAD overlay on that I-2 zone, and I just want to make sure that that I-2 zone is still considered I-2, or this establishment is, because I know the regulation says I-2, and there's a PAD overlay on it. So, I want to make sure that if that has to be clarified as well. And I'm not sure it does, but I would throw that out there to make sure that this particular PAD on this zone is part of the permitted use. So, those are the three comments that I have. Thank you.
Good.
Good evening. My name is Julie Williams, 17, North Canton Road, West Simsbury. I have two siblings who are pot users, and they have really fallen to chemical dependency as a way of coping with even the smallest thing in their life. It started with alcohol, and then it went to pot, and now it's their life. If you have a dependent personality, it will suck you in. If you need a crutch, it will suck you in. It's so sad to see so many want to self-medicate. Back when my children were in junior high, we came to a program in this room put on by A Promise to Jordan, Lisa Gray, who spoke. It was called Not Your Grandmother's Pot. There was a medical director, a medical doctor here, a counselor, a police officer, and Linda, or Lisa, as a mom. It was because of marijuana that that program existed. Everyone was against it. She stated very clearly that pot was a gateway drug for her son. Unfortunately, Jordan's not here today. It's true of alcohol, and the point is, why add to the issue with marijuana? I'm sorry, so many want to alter their state of reality in this way. I understand the medical needs. I support that. Dependency scares me on a big-picture level. I watch vapors at the gas station that can't get in their car and drive away. They have to quickly undo their vape and quickly get it in them. They're so dependent on it. I don't want a person to be behind the wheel of a car that's stoned. I don't want someone making my airplane widget that's high, and I don't want a doctor cutting into me that's high. Again, alcohol does the very same thing. Both have risks involved, so let's deal with one without adding another. This is money driven by the state, and now it's driven by our town. I side with the federal government. Everyone's allowed their own opinion, but mine's based on personal experience. We can't walk this back as easily as we can prevent it. There will always be users, but we don't need to be the hand that feeds them. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Robin Pearson. I'm an attorney with the firm of Alter &amp; Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut. And I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of my client, Simsbury Developers LLC. Simsbury Developers LLC owns Aspen Green Town Homes and Apartments, which are located directly to the south of the Curaleaf facility on Hop Meadow Road. They were there before Curaleaf came. It's a lovely facility. There are 181 families that live there, right next to the Curaleaf facility. My client is very alarmed about the suggested change that has been proffered by Curaleaf with regard to removing the current protections that are in place for my client and those 181 families that live there with regard to the use of the Curaleaf facility. As was noted previously when you began your hearing this evening, your regulations currently allow a production facility for cannabis in the industrial zone pursuant to a special exception review. That requires a public hearing, requires an opportunity for the applicant to present a case with regard to any changes they might want, in this case, Curaleaf, might want with regard to its facility and its operations, and the public will have an opportunity in that circumstance to participate in the hearing and to make it very clear that you would understand their particular concerns. The suggested change that they've asked you to consider is to remove the special exception approval requirement for their operations. So, that means if they were to come in and request expanding it or doing something else with regard to the facility, they would not have to go through the public hearing process. We have a real concern with that. I think it's fair to say that, yes, indeed, they've been a better neighbor than they were initially when they first arrived at that location. My client's concern with regard to their operations has to do with the odor. And some people may find it not a difficult smell, but many people find it to be extremely strong and to be very irritating. My client has 181 families living there. They have outdoor recreation facility, a pool, and a common courtyard area inside. They have no objection to Curaleaf operating as a quiet industrial use, and it is. The only objection they have ever had is with regard to the smell. And if there are any operations that change, and we still experience it, Curaleaf has tried to tighten it up and make sure that you don't smell things as much. I noticed that the report from the planner indicates that there are anecdotal reports of smells issuing from that facility. I, for one, have been there, and I have smelled it. It wafts in on the wind. It changes with wind direction. It's not there all the time, but if it's there and you're out swimming with your children in the courtyard, and you smell it, you think, oh, that's the marijuana. It is something you can either ignore, but it can also be upsetting for you as someone living in that facility. So, all we're asking is with regard to your consideration of the amendment, that you seriously do not change any of the protections that are in place for those 181 families that are living in that facility with regard to their opportunity to communicate through a public hearing process with you. Indeed, I would actually appreciate, it's not proposed at this point, but I believe it would be appropriate for that facility to get notice of any time a special exception application is proposed for the Curaleaf facility, so that they would be sure to be aware of it. Yes, it's published in the newspaper. You might even require a sign. Those are often missed. So, please don't take away any protections that are currently in place. And, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide anything that you feel would be helpful in terms of considering that particular concern. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Boyko. I live at 15 Oakhurst Road. I've lived in town for over 25 years. I have three sons, ages 15, 19, and 25. So, I have a lot of experience with the youth in this community. I've also been the head of one of the largest Boy Scout troops in town for over six years that at times has had up to 100 scouts in it. There's a tremendous difference between decriminalization of marijuana and not arresting a casual user and actively legalizing the full-fledged sale. I know we're not here to talk about legalization. It's been legalized in Connecticut, but we are here to talk about our town. I'm wondering if we're considering responsible decisions or emotional decisions? Are we looking at a money grab or prudent town regulation? I am not against the medicinal use of marijuana for those people who desperately need it, nor do I really care if some of my adult friends want to do what they want to do. But we're not talking about a 3% potency weed smoked at Woodstock. Today's marijuana can be up to 99% potency. It's an entirely different drug. I personally know of minors, minors under the age of 18, with medical marijuana cards locally, who are already providing others underage with product for recreational use. You heard from Lisa about gummy bears and lollipops, cookies, sodas, wax dabs, and shatter. That is not just in a book. It is already in town. We can't even keep vapes that are. We can't even keep vapes that are legal only to those over 21 out of minors' hands and out of our high school. What makes us think it will be any different with this? Illegal use actually increased in states where marijuana was legalized. They thought it would reduce the illegal usage, and it increased. It makes perfect sense. The dealers go in, they buy it legally, and they come out and sell it illegally to minors. Big Alcohol, Big Tobacco, and Big Pharma are all heavily invested in this, and they are the ones that are driving the propaganda campaign. The Influence Foundation is a nonprofit organization whose express mission is to advocate, quote, "through journalism for rational and compassionate approaches to drug use, drug policy, and human rights." This is all funded by Altria, the American Vaping Association, Philip Morris, and Reynolds American, all tobacco companies. Vapes, by the way, were originally designed for marijuana use before they became Juul. Emergency poison control calls for children from newborn to age eight more than tripled in Colorado after legalization. Newborn to age eight. I know a child who accidentally ate a red gummy bear that was infused with marijuana and spent a night in a coma in the hospital. The Journal of American Medical Association of Internal Medicine Studies showed the opioid crisis worsening where marijuana has been legalized. Let's talk about the money. A National Academy of Sciences study determined, for every dollar generated in tax revenue for legalized drugs, it's estimated that $10 in social benefits is lost to help cover related costs of increased car crashes, hospitalizations, workplace productivity, criminal justice, and more. Is our police department, our ambulance, collateral damage from car accidents, treatment programs, and social work budgets ready to take this on? We just added several more social workers to Simsbury High School. Do we want more? In previous meetings, I've heard an awful lot about where we didn't want a marijuana store. I've watched previous zoning meetings. I've heard not in Wheaton, it's too close to a school. I heard several times, we don't want it in Terrifil, not in my neighborhood. This town is all of our neighborhoods, and that zone that you're proposing is in somebody's backyard. The location is directly in the vicinity of those retail establishments most visited by our youth. Best Buy, McDonald's, Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, the movie theater. Do we want that to be a destination for recreational marijuana purchasers who don't have retail outlets near them? I am, if you didn't guess, completely against putting a retail outlet in Simsbury. I would also add that I believe it is incumbent on our local town zoning, and Melissa might know more about this, that it's not just about whether we can have a retail establishment, and if so, where. I believe somewhere in the state statute, it has a list of other things that the zoning board has to consider and vote on affirmatively or to ban it affirmatively, and that includes things like delivery services, which also puts this product directly in the hands of the youth, because that's how they get it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mike Rinaldi, and I live at Pinnacle Mountain Road. I think first, we have to check our definitions. You talk about medical marijuana. You're not talking about medical marijuana here tonight. You're talking about marijuana for medical purposes, of which there's no use. What we're talking about marijuana is the same stuff they're growing up on Hop Meadow Street is for recreational use now, which you're considering. Now, there is a thing called medical marijuana, but that's not the stuff they're growing up there on Hop Meadow Street. A gentleman here is, he's here to protect that group. Medical marijuana is a substance from the cannabis plant, but it's refined that has And if, there are two drugs that are called medical marijuana. One is called, one is called Cannabidol, and the other one is Drobadonol, and their other names are Epidamix and Marinol. One is used for a very, very rare form of epilepsy. The other one is used for the nausea that's created by chemotherapy drugs and the anorexia that's caused by weight loss in AIDS patients. We have pretty good drugs for AIDS right now, so we don't have that problem. The problem is cannabis is a Schedule I drug. DEA says is a controlled substance, and it has no use. Under Schedule I, and I'll read Schedule I for you. These drugs have no currently accepted medical use in the treatment of any condition and lack accepted safety and for use under any medical supervision. One of the things you guys did a few years ago is you said you were growing medical marijuana. You weren't growing medical marijuana. This was the door that was left open so this could happen tonight. So now, a number of my colleagues, believe it or not, became drug pushers. They got 20 patients, applied to the state of Connecticut for a license to prescribe marijuana for medical use, of which there is none. Imagine if you had glaucoma and you said, "I'm going to smoke marijuana, and I'm going to stop my drops," you're going to go blind. If you have a kidney stone, you say, "I want to take marijuana." You'd be crazy. Some doctors and some people, in order to use recreational marijuana, you know, said, "Well, there are 10 conditions we can use." But you don't get better from any of those conditions when you take marijuana. And the marijuana you have to do, you have to smoke it. Like Bill Clinton said, he didn't inhale. Well, why would you smoke marijuana if you're not going to inhale it? It doesn't taste good, I don't think. It doesn't give you any color or benefit, does it? It doesn't do anything if you're going to blow smoke. The problem here in Simsbury, like throughout this nation, we've become a nation of people who are basically becoming hedonistic, materialistic, lawlessness, amoral, drug-infested society. When somebody said, "God help us," God can't help you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else want to speak? Someone in the back?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Charlie Getz, 72 East Wheaton Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070. I think a lot of people have eloquently put forward reasons why we wouldn't want a dispensary in town. So rather than go over those and preamble it, that I'm in agreement with him. I don't think there's any reason at all to have recreational use in town. But let's talk about the four reasons. You probably hear them a lot, and I think everyone in this room hears it, is that there's probably four legs to the pro stool. One is, hey, it's the same as a liquor store. Exact same thing, so what's the difference? The other one is, if it's regulated, it's safer. Another argument is, everyone else seems to be doing it, so what's the point in trying to sort of hold it back? Everyone else is doing it. And the last one is the economics. People have concluded that the economics are good, but let's pull those apart a little bit. Same as a liquor store, very similar in a lot of ways, absolutely, but very different in a lot of ways, and I think it's been eloquently stated, and I don't know, I have to go over it. But here are two things on the law enforcement side that are vastly different. Public intoxication with alcohol or drunk driving with alcohol has tools that are accepted at the state and federal level that our police are trained to use. They have breathalyzers. They can determine this. There's a process, and it helps them deal with a dangerous situation. They don't have those same tools for cannabis. So the measurement becomes, is it subjective, is it objective? And you're putting the police in an impossible position, and you're making our streets less safe. Another thing that's interesting is because banks are federally regulated, dispensaries can't take credit card payments, so they're cash dispensaries for all intents and purposes. And if you look it up, they're 10 to 50 times, not 15, five, zero, times more likely to be the victims of a burglary or a violent robbery. That includes knives, cars smashing through the front, and guns. So they're not the same. They're apples and oranges, wine and weed, as it were. If they're regulated, they're safer. I will actually grant folks that, because the chance of fentanyl being laced into a dispensary is extremely unlikely. However, if you regulate it, it's given tacit approval to our kits that it's okay. Well, they're not 21. They can't get at the dispensary. We put in them right in the crosshairs, because they're getting the street weed, and that's where the danger lies. And also, the street weed is about half the cost of dispensary weed, so the economically less advantaged are driven into those crosshairs as well. So I think in a lot of ways, when we say it's safer if we regulate it, it's a little bit like negligence masquerading as virtue. Again, it's not the same. Everyone else is doing it, don't have to spend a lot of time there. I have teenagers. The foundational sort of logic of all the bad decisions, everyone else is doing it, so I don't think we have to sort of go too far on that. But the economics, I think, is the most interesting thing. The economics are fantastic for the state, and they're terrible for municipalities. And to pull it apart a little bit, think of it this way. The municipality, Simsbury in this particular instance, gets 3% of the revenues of a dispensary. Most dispensaries do around $2, $2.5 million. $3 million is considered a decent producer. So at $3 million, at 3%, Simsbury gets $90,000. The state, however, gets 6.35% plus a potency component, which gets them up to about 20%. And if they can get 200 municipalities to approve a dispensary, they're getting 20% of that de facto governmental Ponzi scheme. That's $100 to $200 million for the state of Connecticut. But we'll never see that. That's earmarked for things that are never coming back here. What we get is the 3%. So let's assume $3 million, 3%, there's 90 grand in our hands. Awesome. By the way, some of it, you don't get the real freedom to spend it, but let's say we have 90 grand a hand. I just talked about how it's a little bit different with the police, and we heard social workers, et cetera. You're going to need an additional policeman almost immediately. You'll need another social worker almost immediately. Those are 150 grand a pop. You have 300 grand in expenditure. For 90 grand in income, you are underwater almost immediately, in perpetuity. As George pointed out here, once it's in, it's grandfathered. So I would suggest that this board actually ban it and kick the problem up to the Board of Selectment. I think Simsbury will thank you, and I think your future selves will thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Elizabeth Peterson, 32 Foxden Road. About 20 years ago, I lived in California when medical marijuana became legal. And dispensary started popping up everywhere, and there was one right at the end of the street. I happened to be neighborhood watch captain, so I became an almost instant expert on having a medical marijuana dispensary in my neighborhood. And it was pretty bad. And I think the last person spoke and said, because it's not federally, it's illegal federally, it's a heavy, heavy cash business. On a weekly, multiple times a week basis, there'd be armed robberies at the dispensary. The neighborhood went into lockdown. After hours, they get broken into. So the impact of the crime in the neighborhood was pretty severe. Now, I can't speak to maybe exactly what we're looking at now, because I do, I tried to look into it. I believe there's some apps that are available now for payment and some other changes. But the bottom line is, it's still a cash-heavy business that tracks criminals who know there's a lot of cash somewhere. So I would just ask the board to take, keep that in mind, what the impact to public safety and the cost to the town could be with law enforcement, and also, as previous said, the maximum revenue looks like it could be $90,000. A couple really bad incidents, that's wiped out, and we're going downhill from there. So I guess that's just one of my points. I just wanted everybody to take in mind the maybe unexpected, unanticipated costs of the crime that could be associated with a cash-heavy business. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Alexander Pepe. I live on Seminary Road. I am a licensed clinical social worker specializing in co-occurring disorders. That's mental health disorders and substance use disorders. I'm in favor of recreational marijuana in this town. I'm also a person in recovery from alcohol and heroin. I think that the regulations that you put forth today go too far, in that they continue to stigmatize marijuana and other substances. This is not a morality issue. Substance use disorders are a disease. Believe me, I know. I deal with them every single day. I'm disappointed in my peers for not being here and speaking up about this. I don't know what else I can say, but I strongly encourage you to approve this and allow recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, board members. I am, I am David Moore. Bob White Way. I'm also a former vice chair of the Economic Development Commission for the town of Simsbury. I am currently the chair of the Democratic Town Committee. I am not speaking on behalf of any of those entities. I am speaking in my personal and individual capacity. I am in favor of the proposed language that the commission is considering. I also am a practicing lawyer who has been practicing for 34 years. There was one point that was raised earlier that I think needs to be clarified. The police actually do have training for determining whether a person is under the influence of marijuana. It is not as simple as the breathalyzer is, but it is still an objective method by which they can determine whether or not a person is indeed impaired. So it is still illegal to drive impaired, whether you're impaired by alcohol or by cannabis use. So the concept that our streets are going to be less safe is really not an accurate situation, not an accurate statement. Again, I support what the zoning board is considering. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Going once? Going twice?
Probably speak. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I will. My name is Ryan Shore. I live on 206 Firetown. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We did hear some comments about how these businesses are heavy cash businesses and how those are obvious targets for crime. We don't have a lot of businesses these days that do hold a lot of cash on premises, but when they do, they usually drop them into a safe. And it's very, very hard to rob. I know, because I've worked at those establishments before. But that is a bit of a misnomer. If you had traveled to Insa and Springfield, as I did this past weekend, you would have seen that most people are paying with a card. I don't know how they're doing it, but it's Massachusetts. I'm sure Connecticut's going to have something similar to that. They're going to be under the same federal laws that we would. And as Dave said, the idea that there's going to be this explosion of crime is a bit of reefer madness, if you might want to call it that. Now, as Liz and the other gentleman had said about how much the economic impact would be, it doesn't look that great as far as how the town would benefit from tax revenue the way that it's all set up right now. So I'm, you know, I'm kind of on the fence when it comes to that. But I would urge this panel to really look But I would urge this panel to really look into the facts of some of the things that we've heard. We've heard comments that were supported by statements from the Hudson Institute, which is a far-right conservative think tank that's heavily supported by pharmaceutical industries that don't like medical cannabis. We heard from a gentleman who said that it's a Schedule I drug, it has no medicinal benefit. But, you know, tell that to my former boss, whose daughter treated her cluster headaches with it, and that got her up off of the couch and allowed her to actually relive her life. Tell that to myself, who was suffering from wasting syndrome 17 years ago and weighed 50 pounds less than I did, and I, or less than I do today. And cannabis was the only thing that was able to bring me back. And yes, I used it illegally in the state of Georgia, where that's a very bad idea. I hope the statute of limitations has run out on that because I'm on camera now. But Marinol did not work for me. Senilgast did not work for me. These other antiemetics did not work for me. They made me feel very terrible. Cannabis was the only thing that was able to turn me around on that. As a result, I ended up being the founding president of the first chapter of the National Organization of the Reform of Marijuana Laws in greater Atlanta area. We researched these things very heavily. We had papers written on this, books that were published on these topics. I've looked through these things a lot, and I've heard a lot of really bunk science here tonight. I don't mean to disparage anybody who spoke, and you're brave for having done that, and everybody has their own opinions, but please, please look into what we're actually, you know, up against here. One more thing about the, what Dave had just said about the police not having any field tests, they can test their saliva. Cannabis is only ingested through the mouth, they can test their saliva. A breathalyzer is only as accurate as it's been calibrated to. They are just a way for somebody to be detained and have been given a blood test later, which is exactly what they do when they suspect somebody of being under the influence of cannabis when they're driving. So there are tests for that. But when it comes down to it, this is about having a store to sell something legally in this town and whether or not we want it, right on the very corner, inches away from Avon and right next to Canton. And I suppose if we don't do it, one of them probably will, but it could be a good way for this town to have something more regulated in place in the area. Would not set a bad standard for children any more than liquor stores do, because if the liquor store is there and we're saying, "What example is that set for kids?" Well, we tell them that adults can use it. It's for adults only. Same thing with a cannabis store. I don't see any difference on that. That's all I had to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to speak? I would propose that we continue this public hearing. Are you in motion?
I would be in favor of that.
Would you make the motion?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Oh, see?
You can't.
No, thanks, Dave.
Sorry.
Yeah. I'd make motion that we continue the public hearing on application 2232 Cannabis Establishment text amendment until our next regular meeting on December 5th, 2022, to be held at the Simsbury Public Library.
In this location?
In this location here.
At 7:00.
At 7:00. I don't know what the address is, but.
It won't change.
7:20.
Okay. Then we have a second.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. My seated member.
I am seated. Last night.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
I have a thought. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I think when Chris Barnett had mentioned last time she was here that we should look at the way Richfield approached this, and I think some of the other towns, they've brought in people with some experience, and I wonder if maybe that's something we could get some testimonials from other towns that have, in fact, opened dispensaries in their towns that are similar, that we could perhaps get some feedback from them as to how it has or has not impacted them.
Staff has looked into the situation in other towns.
But I think it was more just what they, what other towns were doing, if I'm not mistaken, but rather, I would love to see perhaps a town similar, you know, I don't know, Westfield or, you know, in Mass, or somebody who has, in fact, opened a dispensary and what their experience has been six months.
Kind of a description of their experience, a lessons learned, those kinds of things.
Something of that nature. So we have some, you know, it would be helpful to have a little bit of information about that if we could.
Who would you be inquiring, who would you be asking in the town?
Well, I guess.
Proper people from the town? Because you're going to have.
Well, town manager, you could ask a police officer, you could ask for their input.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from the local police. I don't know, I guess I'm throwing it out there to see what other people think, but yeah.
Yeah, I just wonder who and.
I don't know if we want to necessarily just pick your random resident off the street.
Right, right.
But I mean, certainly, we could talk to maybe somebody like the chief police and maybe somebody on their planning committee mission and just see, you know, do they, are they happy with their decision? Are they, did they, you know, did they learn lessons that they might want to pass along? Anything like that?
Okay. Well, we can ask staff to do some.
Yeah, we're capable of doing that. And so we'll look and.
And we're keeping the public hearing open.
Right, so that's why I'm thinking.
So things can be introduced in the future.
And the Board of Selectmen is having their public hearing next Monday night.
Okay, that's fine.
Are they bringing in anybody? Okay.
Are they bringing anybody for what?
Any, any experiences?
We are not, no. But we are having, I propose and ask for the public hearing on our meeting on Monday night. Little shout out there for us.
Okay. At Town Hall?
Town Hall, Monday night. No, here. No, it's 6:00. 6:00.
Okay. Any further comments?
Wendy, head.
Sorry, what?
Wendy's in the back.
Okay. All in favor?
Wait a minute. I just have one more thing. I want to see if we're on the same page here. It sounds like we're considering there will be a time in the future when we, the commission, will work out a list of characters that we would like to hear from or from our town or others.
Not yet. We're asking the staff to do some research.
We're not going to do that. We're going to ask George to rely on his own judgment to determine who he's going to contact and what he's going to ask about and what he's going to report back to us.
Right.
I'm not so certain that's going to, I'm going to find that satisfactory, but you're the chairman of the commission, and if that's your preference for now, I'll support that.
Let's keep the public hearing open as what they do and whether we're satisfied with it or not, it's only important that we keep the public hearing open.
Do we know if there's any facilities in Connecticut? I know there's places that have permitted it, but has anybody actually?
I don't think there's any retail license issued yet, so no.
Okay. So what are we looking for?
Yeah, there's no experience.
There is no experience in Connecticut.
Okay. But I mean, I threw Westfield out there just because I know that that's where people I know would occasionally go, and it's not that far away. So maybe, I don't know, I'm just throwing out, maybe there are some other towns. I can do some digging and see other towns that maybe to suggest, and I can email you.
Let me offer this to perhaps address Mr. Elliott's concerns as well. Obviously, we, I can't imagine us having somebody to be able to attend your meeting on December 5th, but I think we can reach out and see what our resources are and perhaps report back in terms of what we found that may be available to this body without making any particular commitments on your behalf.
Okay.
We have time. We have a six-month moratorium extension, so we have time to do some research, but we, I think it's important that we keep the public hearing open, so.
Agreed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ann?
Aye.
Seattle's in.
Thanks, Ann.
Okay. Opposed? Name abstained? No. 6-0. We keep the public hearing open until December 5th. Okay. We have.
Meeting dates.
We have.
No, we have meeting dates.
We have our regular meeting dates. Has everybody looked at this?
Yes, so my question is, these are the dates that we would fill in?
These are the dates that replace.
Good.
So, yeah, so we offered alternative dates so you wouldn't have those spreads.
Right.
So that's what we've done.
Yeah, those look good. Yeah, definitely. So August, we would still do no meetings, and then we just.
No, so you would do, you would do your, the end of July meeting.
Yep.
No August, but we added, we added that earlier September meeting.
So it'd be the Wednesday.
Yep.
September.
Which again, it's a long gap, particularly if you've got development interests waiting that long period of time. I think it makes, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's good customer service, actually.
We have a motion to approve this.
I move approval of the 2023 zoning commission regular meeting schedule.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Carry 6-0. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?